I'm Elizabeth Benyon, Director of the American Democracy Project at IU South Bend, and Director of Voter Services and Engagement for the League of Women Voters of the South Bend area. Welcome to this conversation with the candidates. Today, I am joined by three candidates running to serve on the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners: District 2 Democrat Oliver Davis Jr., District 2 Republican Derek Dieter, and District 3 Democrat Hodge Patel. Incumbent District 3 Commissioner Deb Fleming was unable to join us due to her prior commitment. Let's start with a question for the candidates. I'll go first to you, Mr. Patel. What are the two or three top challenges facing St. Joseph County? And what skills will you bring to the table in addressing these challenges?
Great, thank you very much for this opportunity to be here, Dr. Benyon. There are a number of challenges out there that I've been hearing from folks as I've been going out and going door-to-door and talking to different individuals, whether they're residents, or businesses, or somewhere in between. And so, in Mishawaka, the 911 Center, it's a county-wide system, but in Mishawaka, in District 3, there's a 911 Center where individuals call if there's an emergency. You may recall, on December 31st, we had a tragedy where a mother was driving a minivan and it slid off into a pond. And there were some challenges with communication and training among the responders. We need to do better by our citizens and make sure that our dispatchers are properly trained so that they can make sure that our first responders who are responding to a call know exactly where that scene is. The county budget is another issue. Between 2016 and 2020, that budget has increased significantly. In 2016, Commissioner Fleming ran for office, and the budget at that point was $115 million. And today, if you like, at the 2020 budget, it's $159 million. So it's about transparency. And she's not participating today, probably because she doesn't want to have to explain why there's a significant increase, $44 million increase, in the budget over those four years. Happy to cover other issues as this conversation proceeds. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go next to you, Dr. Davis.
Good evening, glad to be here. Our key issues that we are facing out here in the 2nd District, number one is respect. We want to make sure that all of our voters are given the same respect that those who are in the first or in the second areas have. You know, oftentimes, we have not seen that kind of respect when our voters have come before the St. Joe County and asked for certain delays, whether it's the IEC or other issues that we have to fight. We need to have the same respect all over the county. Because once people feel that they are included, and the decisions from the beginning all the way through, and not just at the very end, then we can have a buy-in. We can share our ideas with the elected officials, the elected officials can share ours, theirs with us, and we can come together with a great synergy. We have the COVID issues, number two. The COVID issue is definitely challenging our budget. And we've got to look at how we are going to move forward with all of our budgetary deals that we are making in our city. You know, we looked at the fact that over the next four years, we're going to be losing monies given our property taxes. And we are currently having to look out of our general fund. Now, how does that play out when we also have to add in the COVID issues? With the loss of revenue through the hotel issues that we have lost with our football with Notre Dame, and all the issues that we have had to deal with, from hotels to our restaurants, to many others? How can we then take our redevelopment dollars and help build those who are already here? The businesses and the people who are already living here? How can we make sure that they're here? And so, those four, I plan to help build respect back for those in the 2nd District. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dieter, I go next to you. Biggest challenges, and how will you address them?
Okay, thank you very much. And again, thanks for moving the schedule around a little bit. Initially, I was going to be working, which was my business's fluid, so I think this works out well for all the candidates who are in attendance tonight. There are several major issues, and you can pick about any one, but Hodge alluded to the 911 Center. That's been a disaster since it started. When I was on the City Council, I told people, you didn't need to go to one, you could definitely go to two, like the state mandated. I have talked to the people who run that. And I think at the end of the day, there's several things that need to be improved. One, who's in charge of it? Currently, all the three mayors and the commissioner are on board. None have any experience in law enforcement. I have 39 years. I've been on both sides of that radio for a long time. So again, it comes down to budget issues, training issues, personnel issues. The thing that Hodge alluded to, the tragedy of someone going into the water, yes, the dispatching could have been a lot better, but I've been on dozens and dozens of cases where that, unless you would have been there when that happened to get somebody out of a pool or a water, or that type of accident, you have to be on scene. Because by the time the police and/or ambulance get there, it's usually five, eight, 10 minutes. So that's, but that whole thing needs to be wrapped. And secondly, I've been pushing this, the voting centers in the county is, again, is clearly dysfunctional for all the people in the county to be able to vote. Your group and League of Women Voters and everybody else worked very hard of trying to acclimate the people in the county, where to vote, how to vote, and so on. And again, to come up here in the bottom of the ninth, thinking you're going to hit a six-run homerun is ridiculous. I wrote an article back in June about just how dismayed I was that only 12 voting centers were available for the primary. I asked for 60. Again, they came back with 41. Myself and Jake Teshka had a press conference last week, just completely baffled of why Walkerton and Lakeville were left out of the equation. But at the end of the day, all elected officials need to work in conjunction with the election board to make sure that the entire county is served with places in the cities and the townships where people live.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Benyon, if I can just say one thing. I wasn't alluding to, when I mentioned the 911 Center, that, you know, that tragedy could have been prevented in any way. So I just want to be clear about that. The first responders, their goal was to be there. And unfortunately, there was just a lack of training. And even with that training, I don't know that those lives would have been preserved, but there might be other situations out there where we could, you know, prevent a tragedy.
Thank you for that clarification. Let's move on to a topic on many people's minds in St. Joseph County, the Indiana Enterprise Center, or IEC. It's over 7,000 acres of land in northwestern St. Joseph County, east of the town of New Carlisle, and west of the city of South Bend. And there's been a lot of discussion and debate about the further development of this land, which has access to water, and gas, and electric, and broadband, and Class 1 and short-line rail service. Do you support the current process and plan for the Indiana Enterprise Center? If not, how would you change it? And if so, how do you make sense of the continued public opposition to the IEC? And how would you suggest moving forward? And we will start with Mr. Davis.
Glad to share my thoughts on this. Number one, I do not support what is going on. I've stated that for some time now. And I've worked with the people to help raise their voices regarding this situation. And serving on the Area Plan Commission for the last seven years, I was blessed to see and work with different projects all over the county. And one of the key things that we asked as commissioners was, what are you going to do with the proposed rezoning? And everybody, whether you were dealing with a residential property or whether you were dealing with a business, had to state what they were going to be doing. And when it's come down to the IEC, first of all, they tried to come with the big plan of over the 7,000 acres that you talked about. And then they are now trying to come piece by piece by piece by piece. And when you ask them what is their concern, they would say, well, we don't know what we want to do. We have future projects. And I really have had major issues with us trying to treat them differently than what we have treated others. So we have to preserve our farmland. I have fought for green space for years when I was on the City Council, where there was fighting to save Elbow Park, making sure that we didn't put a fire station on our zoo area, so many of these different things that we have had to look at. We've got to be honest with the people from day one. We were dealing with Ardmore, the same problem happened again. We had to get in there to help fight for the people of Ardmore. So therefore, we can do better by, number one, including everybody. Number two, stopping this project, as the Town Council in New Carlisle first had said, they were right on target before they made these last changes. But stop it. And then come together after everything cools off, to then tell people, if there are some buyers out there, let's talk about it. But let's not just say that we are going to not have a plan when we clearly saw all the people who came to the meeting, there is a plan. So be straight up with them and not have a shredder kind of activity be put on them like was done in the past.
Thank you. Mr. Dieter, your thoughts on the IEC?
Well, again, this is a classic example of how government should not work. Since I started looking into this back in March, when they announced my candidacy, I've talked with dozens of people, been to all the township meetings, been to New Carlisle meetings, written around with farmers, talked to as many people as possible. And at the end of the day, I think the county failed miserably in being able to talk to people. I think because of that, there was a lot of apprehension, a lot of mistrust on the part of the people who live out there, which I completely understand. As Oliver alluded to, there are several things that could have been done better. Okay, at the end of the day, in the future, when you want to go do something, when you want to talk to people, when you want to engage the community, you need to go talk to them, look them in the eye, and be honest. I asked several questions to people who were pushing that out there, and I never got answers as a candidate. So that's very disheartening, when you want to go out to people and tell them what you know and be honest and forthright. Again, it's an issue where people want to farm, completely agree with that. People want to sell their property, you can do that. So there needs to be a middle ground for everybody. But at the end of the day, when you're looking at doing things for the community, increasing the tax rate, having jobs and all that, there's a lot of things that go into an equation. But before you start going out there and saying, hey, we've got something coming, but nobody ever tells you what's coming. So it's kind of disheartening for government to treat people the way that they had during this. And then with secret meetings, so-called secret meetings going behind doors and all that. So that is where people get the mistrust of government where it shouldn't be. It's communication, it's talking to people, being honest, and hearing that the first time. So at the end of the day, if I'm elected, it'll be a completely different way of talking to people, communicating, get what people in the community want, and then working together to find a common goal for everyone.
Thank you. And Mr. Patel, your thoughts?
Great. I'll tell you, there are a lot of folks who have thoughts on this. The number one issue with this IEC, the Indiana Enterprise Center in New Carlisle, is transparency. There's been absolutely no transparency. And I'm going to give you examples of it. But before I do that, let me talk about something that I've been focused on. And it plays right into this. It's called LEAD, L-E-A-D. And this is how the prism that I will look through every single issue on, is to listen, to engage, to be accessible, and then to be decisive with the tax dollars. This whole IEC thing, we have not led at all in this. We haven't had any transparency. And I'll give you an example. I was at Purdue Road School back in probably 2015, 2016. And St. Joseph County, the economic development person with St. Joseph County, was giving a presentation. For those of you who don't know what Purdue Road School is, you probably have a couple thousand Hoosiers from around the state that are involved in infrastructure, economic development, elected officials, transportation folks, you name it, that all go to Purdue for continuing education courses. St. Joseph County is talking to people around the state about this project in New Carlisle, yet they fail to talk to the people who live in this area. That's frustrating. I sat in on that presentation that they did down there. I'll go on to give you another example. When I worked in the US Senate, there was a request to do a study, a federal study, of 22,000 acres in the New Carlisle area. At that point, I worked for Senator Donley. We had heard from a lot of folks in our Senate office about that. My recommendation to the senator was not to support the study because the county didn't do their job on the ground to get people to buy into the project and to listen to them, to engage with them, to be accessible, and then to make a decisive decision. They then boiled it down to 7,200 acres. I was at a Farm Bureau meeting earlier this year, where a number of residents were there. Commissioner Fleming was there. She was engaged in not a respectful dialogue from my vantage point and from those who were outspoken about this project, because they became frustrated. We need to listen to these folks, we need to hear them out. They need a seat at the table. When I'm elected county commissioner, although this isn't in our district per se, it impacts the county because we're talking about spending taxpayers' money. I'll use that LEAD model, and I'll make sure that people have a seat at the table and that we have transparency. We won't just put it up on a website and say, hey, we're transparent. But when we try to have a conversation and debate, we go into hiding. We'll actually have people participating from both sides and listening to what's important and what really matters. Thank you.
Thank you. And thinking of how to bring partners together and to get everybody on board, the next question I want to ask is this. How would you work with the city of South Bend and other units of government to maximize taxpayers' return on investment in redevelopment and development decisions for the county? Mr. Dieter, let's hear first from you.
Well, 12 years on the South Bend City Council, including five years as the president, I understand the workings of the South Bend government. And to this hour, as we speak, there's never really been a lot of collaboration between county and city government, which I find, I've always thought about that when I was in the City Council, that they didn't mix, they didn't talk, they didn't work together. You have county council members who take in some of the city council members, the commissioners take in, you know, the race that we're running for, about 65% of the vote comes from the city of South Bend, the entire 2nd District, the entire 5th District, the 6th District, five precincts in the 1st District, four precincts in the 3rd. So it encompasses and it covers all of that. But the point of the matter is, there has never been a working entity between the county and the city when it comes to redevelopment, when it comes to just everything that goes in the government. And I think we could do better by going to one vendor to do the overall bidding for all the streets. We shouldn't be outbidding city and county against each other. How much is this, how much is that? You know, the city does our own LEAF program, the cities in the county, North Liberty and Walkerton and New Carlisle, and Lakeville, they all do their city LEAFs. But at the end of the day, it's not a unigo, but we certainly need to make better use of all the taxpayer money that comes both to the city and the county. Because when I'm going door-to-door, I'm explaining to people, because voters really don't know where their tax money goes, to the library, to the airport, to the schools, and so on. I think by letting them know that all that and every township is different when it comes to the taxes and the assessment. But that's a very good question. We definitely need to work better within the structure of St. Joe County with the city of South Bend being in St. Joe County.
Thank you. Mr. Patel, your thoughts?
Great, thanks for this question. So really, it's about collaboration. And I have a strong track record of more than 20 years of working with cities and towns, with cities, with counties, with state reps, state senators, the governor's office, and also on the federal side with the US House and Senate. Now, I know this is a local issue, and let me give you an example. Ever since I announced that I was going to be running, I've been attending Mishawaka City Council meetings on a regular basis. I've attended county council meetings. And I've asked people along the way, how much interaction do you have between the city and the county, and vice versa? And the overwhelming response is none. You would think that there's walls built up everywhere, and that they can't communicate. One of the recommendations that I would have, that we push forward, and this would, again, be through that LEAD model of listen, engage, be accessible, and be decisive with the tax dollars. You know, I'll give you an example. Say, each of these communities, whether you're talking about Roseland, Mishawaka, Osceola, South Bend, the county, they all purchase squad cars. So why don't we do bulk buying? And I understand there's separation of government and all of that. And what we do is, we figure out between each department, each city, or town, or county, how many squad cars are they going to buy? How many dump trucks are they going to buy? And then we total up that number, and then we bid it out that way. And so, we may end up with an extra, you know, half of a dump truck or an additional police car. And we go through a rotation where these communities benefit from that. Instead of each community playing in their own sandbox, why don't we play as a team in St. Joseph County, partnering with our towns and our cities? That's what we need to do. You know, MACOG, Michiana Area Council of Government, it's an excellent example of people working together, Democrats and Republicans, mayors and county, mayors and city council members, county council members and commissioners from four different counties. Politics, I can't recall a time where I've seen politics play a role in that. That's what we need to do within St. Joseph County. If these other counties can do this stuff, St. Joseph County certainly can step up and do it as well.
Thank you. Dr. Davis?
I'm glad we just had about MACOG, because I was blessed to serve on MACOG for nearly seven years. And I also served on Transpo for 16 years. And MACOG, as it was just talked about, and Transpo, both have bipartisan kind of commissions. And it was great with Transpo. We worked with the city of Mishawaka and the city of South Bend. The people who were appointed to the board were the mayor of Mishawaka, the council of Mishawaka, the mayor of South Bend, and the council of South Bend. And we came together as nine people to help us bring that new administration building that's there, it's newer still, even though it's almost nine years old now, well, 10 years old. But still, considering the fact that our old building was over 100 years old, it's still new to a lot of us. And we were able to do that on a bipartisan kind of deal in terms of helping to get federal and state dollars here. It was our MACOGs, as it was talked about, we worked in four different counties, St. Joseph County, Oakar County, Marshall County, and Cozy Osko County. And so, I was blessed to work with all of those different leaders from those different areas. A lot of them are rural areas. And so, we were able to have the urban areas and the rural areas come together to make infrastructure plans about how we can improve our roads and highways in our local areas. And so, I was able to do that. And then, over these past 12 years, when I was on the South Bend Council, not only did I work in city issues, but being on the zoning area plan, we talked and worked on issues all over the county outside of the city of Mishawaka. And again, when the area plan was set up that way, we were able to have collaboration with everybody. It's set up differently now, which is a shame, but we needed to have had that kind of connection. In all of those things, we had the Ardmore situation that came out with the South Shore. One of the major problems with that is the fact that every single body, whether it was the county council, whether it was the NICD, whether it was the city of South Bend, everybody had a study. Study here, study there, and study there. Now, I'm grateful for the amount of education my parents blessed me to get. However, with all of these people having studies in different silos and not coming together, that was a problem. And so many times, we called out for that, but the county, even though we're on the same floor, on the fourth floor, there was a one section, and we were in another place, the city-county building, there was a wall. And so many people in the city of South Bend believe that the county officials are for those who live outside of the incorporated area. And sometimes, some of the county officials will believe that too. And well, that's a city of South Bend problem, that's a Mishawaka problem. No, it's a St. Joe County. We all pay St. Joe County taxes. And so therefore, we are all one big family here, and we need to come together because when one part of our family is hurting, then all of our parts of family hurt. I'm a social worker, been a social worker for almost 30 years here in the state of Indiana. And therefore, we have to come together as a family, as a community, and lift up everybody. Lift up the New Carlisle, lift up South Bend, lift up North Liberty, Walkerton, and everybody here. And then we become strong. If you only lifted one section of the town, that doesn't do it enough for us.
All right, thank you very much. I want to ask next about what key factors you would each consider with regard to economic development and redevelopment decisions? We've talked about the IEC, and we've talked about development more generally, but what are your top three or four priorities when evaluating proposals? And I'd like to start with Mr. Patel.
Great, thank you for that question. All right, so here's what I would look at. I'd use the LEAD model, L-E-A-D. And from there, I would have conversations with individuals, particularly folks in the development community, and use the IEC as an example. I've talked to developers here locally in this community who haven't had a seat at the table. And these are folks that have invested in our community. They've both invested in the regional economy and around the Midwest. We need to harness our local experts, give them a seat at the table, and figure out what's going to work. We also need to look at what the trends are in terms of economic development. Where can we give people the best opportunity to have a great living wage, where they can provide for their family, that they can save a little bit of money, and also invest some of their resources back into the community? Meaning, they might be able to go out and buy, renovate their house, or do something. So those are a couple of examples of things that I would look at. The other key factor here is, as we're looking at development, we need to figure out how we're going to do it while also preserving the tax base. Because that's how county government runs. And so, we can't just across the board give folks abatements and on their commitment that they're going to create jobs. You know, we need to look at it holistically to make sure that as, you know, we are eliminating certain land from the tax rolls, how are we going to actually generate revenue in order to provide services that are needed? And a good example of that service would be the 911 Center, right? Making sure that we can provide adequate service. So those are a few different areas that I would look at in terms of making economic development decisions within St. Joseph County. And I'd also look at examples of other communities that are outside of our county to see what they've done in terms of best practices.
Thank you. Dr. Davis, the criteria that you would put in place in making these kind of development decisions?
Number one thing, I want to make sure that everybody in St. Joe County eats. We all like to eat. And therefore, since we like to eat and we need to eat, we have to make sure that when we do business, that we are not just feeding families who live in Michigan and other parts of this country, that we are doing business for people who live here in the city of South Bend, the cities of Mishawaka, and Lakeville, and everybody else here around the New Carlisle area. The reason why that's important is because so many times, we have looked at businesses outside of our area to take care of us. That means we are furnishing and helping feed other places. We've got to feed ourselves. And I'm glad too, when I was on the City Council, when we voted for our bidders agreement here, that makes sure that we looked at our local union contracts, that we did that. Now, other people can promise that they're going to vote on all that. I already voted on it. I already made sure. And that bill is being held up in the commissioner's office because of two of the three members do not want to vote on that. And so, I make sure, I will make sure that that's already voted on, so we can make sure that we eat. Second thing we have to look at is not just redevelopment, but how we take that redevelopment and to redevelopment businesses that are already here. We already had many of our businesses that have been hurt through all the COVID issues. How can we use redevelopment dollars to deal with this? We've had this discussion for years on the City Council. We've looked at what others have done. They have bought different types of equipment and other kind of services that we normally would pay for in the general fund. We can take those redevelopment dollars and use those for those issues. When police or fire are protecting a certain area, why can't we use redevelopment dollars to take care of our police and take care of our fire? Because when you set up a redevelopment area, all of those taxes go to that one particular area. And that money, the property taxes money, stays there, and it comes out of our general fund. Well, our general fund is hurting. And so, as we continue to set up more and more redevelopment kind of places and TIF dollars kind of settings, it's taking money away from our general fund, which then puts more added pressure, and we cannot pay our employees correctly. People leave and everything else. We saw all the issues going on with people leaving in the fire and police departments and the sheriffs coming and asking for more money. Well, as we get more money in the general fund, we're able to do more. But since we are having challenges with that, with our property taxes, let us be creative with our redevelopment dollars and help us to be able to look beyond what we have normally done. Instead of talking about always bringing in new business from other places, build up our businesses here. And when we build up our businesses here, other places will see what we are doing to keep everybody here eating, and then they will want to come and join in that meal. When people see you eating, and they can smell all the flavors at Mama's house and Daddy's house, they want to come by that house too and then say, I want a plate too. Other places will want to come to St. Joe and get a plate of what we've been eating. And so, we can do it from that standpoint. Let's feed everybody, let's make sure that they get good food.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dieter?
Okay. Could you repeat the question again?
Yeah, yes. The question is, what are your three or four criteria that you had put in place when making economic development or redevelopment decisions? What factors should we consider?
I'm not going to steal Hodge's lead analogy again, but that's a good model. But communication, I hate to keep saying that, but you know, we have a local chamber of commerce, you have the Rotary. We've attended, all of us have been to the Builders Association and talked to realtors. You have a plethora of people whose business is doing that for the community. I think the model that Mishawaka has done on Grape and Main Road is the way to develop, and they're very successful. I think, unfortunately, South Bend hasn't taken a page out of their book of very, very good development, the way that they set it up, the aesthetic way the streets and all that are set. But at the end of the day, there should be, again, I'm not a big meeting guy for the sake of meeting, but you have all these people, and everybody's on their own little tangent of what they want to do, which is fine. But at the end of the day, as a community, as a county, we all need to be on the some page and some aspect of what we're going to do, whether it's the Cressys, or majority builders, or all these builders and very successful businesses in the area, to work together as a government entity to find out what they need. It was interesting, we went to the Home Builders Association. They did an online presentation, which was interesting. And my question was, what, as an elective official, can we do to help the builders and so on? And it was about the flow of paperwork and just all the red tape that goes into getting permits and stuff like that. So working and getting the information from the people. I'm a street guy, 100%. I'm a street guy 100% about every single day for hours, which I love. And getting that information from the people who live in the community, the people who work in the community, and the feedback that we can bring as government officials, that's how you get it. I've been very dismayed of the county commissioners don't even attend the county council meetings, which only meet once a month. City councils twice, councils once. So there's no viewing of what's going on, just getting a read of the whole community. But working this entire, there is so much talent in this community and working with them, not reinventing the wheel, but working within the boundaries we have, the TIFs, districts in South Bend, which Oliver alluded to, takes a lot of money away from the tax base in South Bend and the general fund. The county does not have as much. I think it's South Bend is way over TIF, which means the money that's captured in there is, stays in there. So again, communication and working within the parameters of what you have to begin with.
Mr. Dieter, let me follow up with you then as we move into this next question that I have for you all, which is on tax increment financing or TIF money that allows the county to divert future property tax revenue increases from a defined area or district toward economic development projects or public improvement projects in the community. Can you explain your TIF philosophy? You mentioned some areas are over TIF. So when, where, and how should this money be used?
Again, the concept of TIF is theoretically, if a TIF district's in South Bend, the landmass, I think when I left there was probably 30%, if not more. It's not some of the outline now. The airport TIF is huge. And so at the end of the day, the tax revenue taken within the boundaries of, let's just go Lincoln Way to Olive, Walnut to Western. So all the money that would have been taxed from property taxes stays within that for infrastructure, streets, roads, and so on. So that then has an effect on the general fund, where you pay all your bills from police, fire, everything else that the city has to pay for, comes out of the general fund. So that being said, there's a fine line of, does the TIF dollars stretch to where then economic development comes from that? There's been a discussion. Marty Wolfson has spent hundreds of hours into that and brought up some very good points. But at the end of the day, the county doesn't have as much TIF districts per se as the county because there is a line of demarcation of city boundary and county boundary. And again, like we've all talked about, the county officials have never crossed Mayflower to come into the city or whatever it is to look into that. But it's again, I hate big studies, but there's been so much information out there that collectively, I think that elected officials need to sit at the table and hash out, hey, is all this TIF dollars, is this worth taking the money out of the general funds? And has the development then exceeded what it should have as far as if that money comes back to the community? It's kind of complicated. The general public doesn't understand it. But I think definitely there is a big, big push to make sure that we're doing all this correctly.
Thank you. Mr. Patel, your thoughts on TIFs?
So let me start off by saying, I'm probably unique, I'm not going to say probably, I'm definitely unique in where I've lived within St. Joseph County. I've lived in Osceola, I've lived in Mishawaka, and I now live in South Bend. I also own ground out in the county, west of South Bend, farm ground. So TIF is good, it's a great tool, but if you overuse a tool, it's going to dull. Imagine if you're using a saw and you start, the blade starts to wear down, right? It becomes less effective as you're trying to build out further, right? And when I say build out further, meaning outside of what that TIF district is. And so what we need to do is make sure that we're using it for its intended purpose. We need to have balance, and we need to be reasonable about how we are utilizing these TIF districts. And to make sure that there's a balance on the investment that's taking place. Because as we start to grow these TIF areas, they're going to require more resources from the county. However, if the county has a diminished amount of money that they are able to utilize, how are they going to adequately provide services there? Let me give a really good example. US 31, great project, big supporter of it, you know, to fund that new highway. But we also had existing roads there, right, along US 31 that the state handed over to local governments. That became an additional burden on local governments to have to absorb, you know, repair and maintenance after the state had said, all right, well, we will, you know, fix or repair certain roads or certain sections of roads. So we need to look at it, you know, from that standpoint. Does it make sense? Is it balanced? And are we overburdening the rest of the system by focusing so much money in a specific TIF? So that's my response, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Davis, you mentioned a little bit this idea before, but I wonder if you could talk a little bit more about your philosophy on TIF districts?
One of the biggest challenges with TIF districts is the people who are making the decisions. When city council, county council commissioners make decisions, town councils make decisions, people know who they are. They are public officials. They should come before the public. When they have stopped at Walmarts or Martins or any other kind of stores that they have stopped, people know. They can say that they loved their decision, or they hated their decision, or all the other different things that public officials get, which is fine. The problem is with the amount of money that our people who are on these boards are making in terms of the decisions they're making, a lot of people don't know where they are. So they can go ahead and make these kinds of decisions without necessarily having to face the public as much as they should have faced, and that's a major concern. We have to be very careful and really highlight who they are and have our public to be more aware of that. As more public understands who sits on these boards, they can then apply the kind of pressure that they do to everybody, because everybody needs to face that. These are public dollars, and oftentimes they are used as, these are private dollars. No, these are still public dollars. These are still tax dollars that are in that small section that they have deemed for that area that we call the TIF. And the IEC and all those areas are with that TIF dollars. And so when people talk about, this is going to bring a lot more money to the whole county, this is going to help all of our coffers, no. A lot of these monies are going to help that one TIF area, and that's it. But at the same time, it's going to use general fund dollars to protect through police and fire, through fixing up so many other things around it, that it decreases our general funds. So that's why I said earlier that we have to be creative. We have to be creative with our TIF dollars. Since our general dollars help to protect them, then let's use some of our TIF dollars to take care of that portion that the general dollars have had to do to help, to be able to maximize the use of those TIF dollars. And as we can be more creative, and this is nothing that is rocket science, as other cities and other states have done that, and we can do that here and be able to maximize every single dollar because we are at a financial crisis. And you have to stretch every single penny and do every kind of thing and open up every single door you can and not just do things as normal because we are not living in normal times.
Thank you. We sure are not. Mr. Patel, at the beginning of this conversation, you talked a little bit about some challenges at the 911 Center. How will you remedy cost issues relating to the staffing, software, hardware, or training of the county's 911 program? And how can the county improve 911 response times?
Well, let me start off by saying, you know, I think there are people that are in positions to do good, right? Whether it's our first responders who are well-intended or folks at the dispatching level. But one of the challenges that we have is that this whole 911 Center, it understands a mandate by the state, but it's been botched from the beginning. So they've wasted millions of dollars, and this goes to that lead, L-E-A-D. And really, the point is the D on there. Be decisive with our tax dollars, you know? We were basically dummies with our tax dollars when it comes to the 911 Center. They purchased software and equipment that didn't really meet the needs because they didn't listen, they didn't engage, and they weren't accessible to folks to have discussions and conversations about what made sense. They chose the wrong leadership. And so now we have to invest, unfortunately, more money that we don't have into developing a robust 911 system. We need to make sure that we have adequate training, that we have the right equipment, that it's working, and also that our dispatchers know what equipment to send out to what scene from what department. Sometimes overconsolidation creates problems. And this is one example of where overconsolidation has created problems with the 911 Center.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
I was there when the council just came to the table. And in terms of the frustration that came out of many of us who were at that table that night, it was awful because we saw it. We saw it, those of us who were in the city council then, we saw that this was going to be a problem. We voiced our concerns. I am proud of our council because that night, almost a lot of us blew our gaskets, and we needed to because the way this thing was being done. And from the beginning, when a tree is planted and you start leaning, it takes a creative plant professional to be able to build that tree back to make it straight again after it was leaned in the beginning. And that's really what we are having to do. We're having now to build that thing back where it was because that first director, I tell you the truth, he and I tangled in that meeting, and he didn't appreciate what I had said to him. And I told him I didn't appreciate what he said because I could see that he did not want to take the time to even listen to us as elected officials. And he didn't listen to his staff, and the results are clear. And so not only should we listen, as many of my colleagues have already said, but we have to not listen to those who are elected officials. We have to listen to our staff. They, many of them were former South Bend staff, and then they came over to the county. And that was a big debate that we had, you know, releasing people who are already under our own guidance to send them over to the county, and then they ran into a buzzsaw. That was horrible. So now we have to come back, and I'm glad to be, hopefully, being back in the county in this kind of a setting or in the county to be able to work on that issue that we saw from the beginning that was not good. I even had concerns about the fact that where it was located, the building where it was located. I mean, the majority of the people were over in this side of the city, and yet, you know, where it's located. So we have to make sure that we are doing things that are transparent, transparent, and transparent. And then do it, like I said from the beginning, with respect. Leadership has to respect those who are there. And being in the crisis management myself, as a social worker who's dealt with a lot of crises, suicide, and many other issues, when people are calling 911, I've worked on a hotline when I started out several years ago. And my training was on hotlines. You have to be very precise with where you are helping out and sending law enforcement to help a family. And as a social worker, as a person who worked in hotlines, I needed to know that. And so when you are not sending people to the wrong addresses and everything else, lives are at stake. And that could be my life, could be your life, it could be any one of those lives here. And so when I worked as a social worker on a hotline for my first years in this profession, I clearly understood what it's like to be in crisis when a person's on the phone saying, "I need help." So therefore, with my background in crisis management, since I've already worked on those kind of settings, I clearly understand the need of us to be able to work. And I got to give it to my other colleague who's about to speak now. We both fought that issue. And so that's something that is high on our priority because we felt the pain from day one, and we still feel that same pain.
Thank you. And Mr. Dieter, your earlier comment made it sound like you thought perhaps there was overconsolidation here as well.
Absolutely. Oliver hit the nail on the head. And I'll first preface that this bill or this whole entire thing sat on the county commissioner's desk for three-plus years, including the person that Oliver defeated in the primary. And I think either Oliver or Karen was on the public safety chair, and we had asked, and if you ever want the minutes, I can get them, "We need an update, we need an update, we need an update." And the clock was running out. So again, the leadership that both that Hodge and Oliver expressed too, our mayor wasn't here, he was off in another country. So we had an interim mayor who was given the task of trying to talk us into this, and I stopped him in his tracks because, in fairness to him, he has no idea what the police radio is about. I was on both sides for 39 years. I know the ins and outs of the good, the bad, the different, and so on. And at the end of the day, Oliver was on the phone with people. I was the person going to the houses when people were committing suicide, when people were being hurt, when people were being beat up. Unfortunately, sometimes when people are being killed at the door, I'm in the door. I'm the first person there. So I saw that. So the information that you need to get as an officer, as a fireman, as a paramedic, needs to be precise. The people who really were hosed over were the people in the city of South Bend, the dispatchers, the 52 people who worked it there. The city had spent millions of dollars, roughly around 14 million, into that radio room. It was fantastic. It was the best in the county, no doubt, 100%. And I'll remember, I told those people, and I told the people who were trying to push that, the people are going to get hosed, a nice word, with all the people that lost their pension. They lost their tenure. They took a cut in pay. They had worked at the city of South Bend for a long time, done a fantastic job. And since the 911 Center got back online, way almost to Osceola, Notre Dame has opted out of it, Walkerton has opted out of it, I've heard other entities may. But at the end of the day, everybody's now complaining on who's supposed to pay most of the part, and it comes to the county, which isn't fair because the city of South Bend has the most calls of all of them. So I think all three of us are on board. That needs a total overhaul. It should have never happened. It did. But as elected officials, whoever gets elected here, I know that's going to be something that we all work and get that stuff fixed.
Dr. Binion, if I can add one thing, you know, this conversation is about transparency. Commissioner Fleming, this disaster happened on her watch, yet she has failed to sit down and be a part of this discussion today with the other candidates. And so that's a reflection, right? She obviously doesn't care about the citizens and the importance of the 911 system and making sure that it works for every person, whether you're in the city, the town, or the county. So, you know, kudos to everyone who's participating here. And hopefully, it's a reflection down the road of how voters make decisions.
Well, the commissioner isn't here to defend herself this evening, so let's move on to the next.
Did have an opportunity to, but once again failed to step up and lead.
Let's move on to the next question, which is about things that citizens do think quite a lot about. Leaf pickup, recycling, and park services are probably the most visible services that county government provides, or at least the ones on many people's minds. Should the county continue to provide these services for people residing outside the city limits? And if so, do you recommend any changes to these programs in the future? And we start with Dr. Davis.
Well, in the second district, I would be amazed to find a whole bunch of people who've gotten their leaves picked up because this is something that is a gift to those who live out in the first and district and other districts. We don't get that privilege. Yet, here we are, having to use county dollars, tax dollars that we are paying to, out of our own monies, yet we don't get any benefits from it. So why should I pay for something that I don't get any benefits for? Why shouldn't anybody who lives on the west side of South Bend, New Carlisle, Olive Township, Carlisle, Olive Township, Olive Township and everybody else, why should they pay for that? It's ridiculous. And so therefore, we have to make sure, that goes back to my first comment, respect. Why should somebody else on another side of the county get certain privileges and get certain services, and those of us who live on another side don't get that? It's ridiculous. And so, no, I'm not in support of the leaf program. I think we have to come up with kind of programs that are best for the whole kind of county. There, of course, will be certain things that each county area may have some uniqueness, but leaves fall everywhere. Leaves do not just fall on one side of the county and say, okay, on this side, we're not going to deal with that. Snow falls everywhere, rain falls everywhere. Okay, so therefore, leaves are equal opportunity. No matter if you're Democrat, Republican houses, leaves fall on your house. So therefore, we have to make sure that we can have services that we pay for. And in this area where we are running in the second, we are not benefiting from that. So no, I do not support the leaves project from that standpoint because those of my neighbors and like many of us over on this side, we got to deal with that. They say, well, it's a city issue. That's a city issue from that standpoint. So everybody's having to learn that. As it becomes more and more of a city issue, then let everybody have to pay for it like we did. Let's move forward and be more creative with our dollars, especially in this COVID time, and utilize those dollars. I was glad what they did this year. They put those dollars to help pay for many of our sheriff dollars for our police. And we need to be able to utilize those dollars to be able to do something else creative with our own budget since we're already on this stress.
All right. Mr. Dieter?
The, again, this format is because Oliver answers usually substantially the same thing. But Oliver's right, out in our district, the second district, New Carlisle, Walkerton, North Liberty, Lakeville, in their city limits, they do their own city pickup in the country. There's a few subdivisions, and they contract with private companies. But the bulk of the private pickup that the county was paying for is out in Penn and Harris and Clay Township out that way. out that way. Again, my personal opinion, it had been tried in-house by the county for several years with their street people, and they have too much responsibility just doing the streets, let alone picking up. Again, the entire leaf stuff, it depends on the weather. If you get an early fall, you get an early snow, everything is done for the entire winter so stuff, even here where I'm at on Portage Avenue, a couple of years ago, we had an early winter, those leaves were there until springtime. So that's an issue, but I think now I believe that the county had put a little money into it, but I think people now have the ability to go hire somebody, which that company does a very nice job, but it's up to the citizens to decide, hey, out here in Olive Township, Lincoln, Warren, wherever, Madison Union, why am I paying, why are some of my tax dollars going up into there? So I was attempting to do a breakdown, and it's, again, it's very hard to get information from the county on, out of the budget, how much directly from, let's say, Olive Township tax dollars from property taxes actually goes out that way. But the moral of the story is, everybody should be able to pick up their own leaves. I don't think it should be on our tax dollars. They could go to roads, they could go to the 911 center. But at the end of the day, private companies can put that out to bid, which they've done. But as Oliver alluded to, out on the west side where we're at, the leaves aren't a big issue and people really aren't that concerned because they either let them lay or they burn them out in the country.
Mr. Patel?
Leaves, what a wonderful topic, very seasonal. And so, let me say this, you have to look at it through, again, you're going to get tired of this, but I think you look at it, lead, to listen, engage, be accessible, and be decisive with our tax dollars. We need to look at this in a comprehensive way and look at it from a budgetary standpoint. St. Joseph County is the only county in the state that I'm aware of that offers a leaf pickup program, which is not comprehensive by any means. You heard the other two candidates talk about, there are parts of their district that don't benefit from this, yet they pay for it. So we need to figure out a solution to this. And, you know, it's very difficult to get information on this leaf pickup program. Find a vendor or contractor who ends up getting paid for tipping fees, which is where you deposit, you dump off the leaves. They don't have to pay for that in their contract, they get fuel. I'm sure a lot of people, I would love to have free fuel, you know, as a part of a contract for my clients, for my small business, but it just doesn't happen, right? But for some reason, in county government, they think it's okay to help fund that. So we need to also look at it in a holistic sense. I work for a healthcare system, and we can't have people burning leaves, but the residents need to find some solutions as well. When they purchase a home or purchase land, it's highly unlikely that the county is going in there and planting trees on their property. Those trees exist, they know what's there already. If somebody buys a house on the river, the county doesn't step up and pay for the flood insurance for their home. Or if they buy a lake house, the county doesn't come in and say, hey, we'll pay for your flood insurance. If people have grass clippings, which we're starting to, you know, leave that season of having to cut grass, the county doesn't come in and pick up grass clippings. So we need to look at it, one, from a budgetary standpoint, is this a service we can afford? Two, how are we, if we can afford it, to what level will we be able to afford this service? And then three is, I think we need to look at maybe doing this internally within, you know, the highway department as it was done before, because a lot of this money that's being provided goes out of, you know, the contractors out of the state. And so we could benefit more from keeping that money here within the county. I also want to add that my opponent has received thousands and thousands of dollars from the vendor who has that contract. So it's a no-brainer in terms of, you know, why she wants to continue to support funding this leaf pickup program at all, at all lengths. Let me touch on parks really quick. Parks are important. That is an area where, well, I use it, I'm sure a number of other folks, you know, in the community use our parks, but it's a draw to our county and it's going to help people. You know, Derek and Oliver, we're both at a Home Builders Association meeting and we talked to the home builders, you know? They're building homes, people want to have good access to parks. So there's a connection there between economic development, housing, and having good parks. So we need to make sure we use our resources. I would suggest that we look at state and federal grants to help enhance our parks. The state has funding for trails that we should utilize. The federal government has a program called CMAC, congestion mitigation air quality dollars that goes through MACOG, which I touched on earlier, the Michiana Area Council of Governments. We need to look at it from that standpoint. And the last thing I'll say is, from the county level, you know, we have a parks board and they're looking through it in one lens, right? And then you have a parks foundation who isn't necessarily as, working as closely together as they probably would like to, to make sure that the vision of the board meets the goals of the foundation. And so the example of those two groups is maybe we need to utilize lead for them as well, to make sure that we're being wise with not only the tax dollars that the county's putting up, but then also those foundation dollars. So those are several examples on leaves and parks. Thank you.
Thank you. We just have about a minute and a half left, so I want to give each of you about 20 seconds or so to just make a final pitch to voters, why should they cast a ballot for you on Election Day? Mr. Dieter?
Thank you very much. We'll go very quickly. I've been involved in the community since 1975, spending 39 years on the police department, I've been a coach, a mentor, a community activist, I'm out in the community every single day talking to people. I'm not going to do the lead thing because he's done that already, but people know me, I am very accessible, people stop by my house here in Portage, they call me at any time. I listen to people all the time, I am engaged, and I am very decisive. So thank everybody for the opportunity, thank my opponents for coming on, and everybody stay safe.
Thank you. Dr. Davis?
When people are in crisis, over the years, they call me, 574-876-6938, 574-876-6938. My phone rings, somebody may say, who's that? I said, I don't know. They get on the other side, it's somebody out in Green Township, I need your help. They're building something out here we don't want. Who's this person? From Artmore, I need your help. Who's this person? We've got a flooding problem over here at the ethanol plant. Our houses are dealing with water coming up. The ethanol plant's shut down on our flooding problem. I'm out there. Elbel, we got a problem, the city's going to change that and save it. Where there was geese, my phone was there. We need help with the casino, I was there. We need help dealing with our budget and police and fire, I was there. We need help with whatever the situation, LGBT, I was there. I was there for people when it came down to redevelopment, I was there for people when it came down to so many things of our transportation and when it came down to our area plan. I was there.
So you're always only a call away.
I'm only a call away, 574-876-934.
Thank you, got to move to Mr. Patel. Got to move to Mr. Patel.
So I'll be really quick. Thank you for this opportunity to be here. I want to be the hired help in District 3. I show up time and time again at these public forums because I think it's important to have transparency, both for Hodge Patel on November 3rd, for County Commissioner, District 3, and you'll have a representative that listens, engages, is accessible, and is decisive with your tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for this wonderful conversation. I appreciate it. Voters, be sure to get out and vote on or before Election Day. On behalf of the American Democracy Project and the League of Women Voters, thanks for tuning in.